Welcome to the special and regular meeting of the City of Pacifica City Council on January 10, 2022. We're opening the meeting at 6:02 PM. And Sarah, will you start with the description?
Yes, so tonight we're starting at 6:02 PM for the study session regarding solar voltaic system with optional battery storage at the Pacifica Community Center. And this meeting is being held by teleconference only pursuant to the provisions of Government Code, Section 54953, as amended by AB 361. And with that, I will turn it over to Sam Bautista to begin the presentation.
Sarah, did we want to tell people how to participate or no? Is that for the regular meeting?
Sure, I can go into that detail for now. We have a few public attendees.
Thank you.
This meeting is being held by Zoom and can be joined by the Zoom link provided in the agenda or by phone to the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. The meeting is also on local TV channel 26 or can be accessed online at www.cityofpacifica.org/live. And those members of the public wishing to make a public comment can use the Raise Hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on the agenda item when it's that time, or *9 if you're dialing in to raise your hand. And the city clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time. To provide your comment, please state your full name for the record at the start of your public comment. Written in email public comments will not be read during the meeting, but those received by 12:00 PM today were provided to council members and posted on the city's website.
Thank you, Sarah. I appreciate that. Hi, Sam.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Big Stick, and city council members. Sam Bautista, your Deputy Director of Public Works. Tonight's study session is to receive a presentation regarding the deployment of a solar photovoltaic system with optional battery storage at the Pacifica Community Center and to provide direction to the city manager on pursuing a power purchase agreement with Peninsula Clean Energy for participation in their public facility's solar and storage procurement process. Peninsula Clean Energy is presenting an opportunity for the City of Pacifica to participate in a new procurement model to help reduce the cost to procure and install solar systems with optional battery energy storage systems. And this type of project is consistent with the city's climate action plan. And at this time, I'll turn the floor over to Dave Frybush of Peninsula Clean Energy to start the presentation.
Hi, this is Dave Frybush, as Sam said, with Peninsula Clean Energy. I believe Rafael Reyes who...
I'm Dave.
Okay, great. Rafael's gonna start, and then we'll do some tag team on this.
Thank you very much for the introduction, members of the city council. We're thrilled to be here to present this opportunity to you. A special thanks to all the work of the city staff as well on this. If I could go to the next slide, please. I think probably most council members and many members of the community are already familiar with Peninsula Clean Energy, but we're the primary energy service provider for San Mateo County and not-for-profit, locally-led public agency with representatives from every city council in each city and the county. And we have a mission to reduce greenhouse gases and expanding access to sustainable and affordable energy solutions. And as part of that, we have been working now for a number of months with local agencies throughout the service territory on this program in which we're bringing together sites to deploy solar and, in some cases, storage, as has been considered here, I believe, to make the sites more sustainable, including more resilient in the face of power outages and lower costs for the public agencies. We're tremendously excited about this program as a way to deliver more value to the cities. And this is a pilot, I should note. And we will be looking to continue this and have additional sites brought in in subsequent rounds. And this program is part of an overall portfolio of programs that include not only solar and storage, but electric vehicle incentives and EV charging incentives, as well as building decarbonization incentives and programs. So we're thrilled to be here with you, to provide this opportunity to you. And with that, I would like to invite my colleague Dave Frybush to speak to the specifics of the project. Thank you.
Thanks. The next slide, please. So I'm going to discuss the overall project and the process we've gone through to get to this point. I'm gonna talk about the specific evaluation of the community center, discuss some of the financials associated with that and what our next steps might be. Next slide, please. So we have been looking at a portfolio of projects across multiple cities, including the county of San Mateo, for government buildings where we could deploy distributed energy resources, in this case, solar and also solar plus storage. Our goal is to help you reduce your energy costs as well as hedge against rising utility rates, help achieve sustainability goals. A key thing is we want to help make the procurement and evaluation of these resources, take that off your plate and put it on ours, and develop a program that we can reproduce. Rafael mentioned this is a pilot, and this is the first round of the pilot. We've been working with McCallman Engineering, which is an experienced solar and distributed energy resource engineering design firm. They were competitively selected. They're local, they're in Campbell, and they have done the site evaluations for all the sites. Next slide. So what we've done so far at the site level is we've gone and looked at the site. We've developed a preliminary plan for the resources we would put there. We've gone back and iterated with the facility staff to come up with a final plan. So in this case, it's solar plus storage along with savings estimates and technical documentation that would be part of the utility interconnection process. And then at the programmatic level where we are now is we're securing commitments from customers that they'll agree to move forward with us. And then we would aggregate all these sites into all these projects into a portfolio and then run a solicitation for that portfolio, which we believe will provide, will help reduce costs for everybody by being part of a bigger procurement. And then we would install and maintain the systems and execute a power purchase agreement with you and each of the cities. And we'll talk about that next. So we evaluated six county sites, 10 municipal sites, and the county event center. And at the end, we'll show you the ones that we're moving forward with. Sorry, next slide now, please. So the model we're looking at again is that we would, on the left side of this diagram, we would have an individual power purchase agreement with each city for the specific building we're talking about. And then we would go and run this solicitation for the equipment and manage that process. And so we're handling the full site evaluation, procurement, installation process. We screen the, you know, we select a good partner to provide the equipment. And then we would provide a power purchase agreement, which is a fixed dollar per kilowatt hour rate that would be lower than the utility rate you would pay for the energy if it was coming from utility and not from the panels. And then that's dependent on the rate tariff and the site-specific attributes. And we'll get into the specifics of this site in a second. Next slide, please. So the site in question is the community center. A slight history of this project. So originally, we had worked, there was a previous iteration of the project that had begun before my time at Peninsula Clean Energy, where we went out to each and asked each of the cities to provide us with facilities that would be good candidates for resilient facilities. So for solar plus storage that could be a site in the advantage of a large-scale power outage. And then we moved forward to this project where we're actually moving forward with these evaluations. And we went back to the cities and said, hey, of the sites we looked at in that first project, that passed certain criteria, which one, you can select one, and which one do you select? And so this was the one that was selected by the Pacifica team. And so we looked at the site for solar and storage. And so the site proposal here is for a 76-kilowatt rooftop solar system and then a backup power battery that would tie into the existing transfer switch that I believe PG&E had installed. And you currently have an agreement with them where they will bring a backup generator in an outage. But that agreement, to my understanding, is coming to an end soon. And so this battery would essentially make use of some of that infrastructure and plug into that. And so it would be a 60 kilowatt, 240 kilowatts, so a four-hour battery that would back up the existing loads in the building. And that would provide, by the way, when I say four-hour battery, that means if the battery's going at full power, it would last four hours. But in this case, we're not expecting the battery to be needing full power. It will basically dispatch as much power as needed to power the building. And based on the load data we have, we would expect it to be able to provide 16 hours of backup with no solar production. And then, of course, if the sun is shining, then there's additional energy that's being generated, so the overall duration would be longer. And then this solar would offset about 80% of the total energy usage of the building over the course of the year. Next slide, please. So the graph just shows the, it's the solar production, orange is winter, blue is summer. There's actually more production in winter because we're using defining winter by the utilities definition of winter, which is all months except June through September, June, July, August, yeah, the four months of starting June through September. So there's more months in the winter, but of course, there's less solar generation in any given month. And so our estimate is that this solar system would produce about 120,000 kilowatt hours in a year. And that estimate is based on McCallman Engineering's use of a tool called PV-Cyst, which is one of a few industry-standard, highly-detailed solar analysis that takes into account historical, you know, marine layers and tree shading and that kind of thing. So this should be a pretty solid estimate. And that solar would, and putting aside the battery for a second here. So that solar, if those panels showed up on the building tomorrow, we would expect it to reduce the energy bill for the facility by about $19,000 next year. Now, of course, there's a cost to getting those utility panels on the roof, and we'll get into the details of that because they don't show up for free. But essentially, the overall pie of savings is about $19,000. And out of that, we need to buy the equipment, and we'll get into that. There will be some demand charge savings. And for those that aren't familiar, your electric bill has two components. There's the dollar per kilowatt hour you pay for every kilowatt hour, which is the energy you use. And then there's an additional charge for the maximum demand of the building, the kilowatts, at any given point. And so that's based on the highest kilowatt demand in a 15-minute interval in a month. So if it turns out that your highest demand is at the same time that the solar is generating, then it will help you get some savings there. Now, the thing about that is it's a very variable. It depends when the highest demand is. We can look historically and say, yeah, last year, if you'd had the system, what would have happened? And we looked at 2019 data because we didn't want COVID to be influencing the, you know, on the hope and expectation that COVID was gonna be a kind of aberration. It seems like it's not quite turning out to be that way. But anyway, we looked historically, and the additional demand charge savings would be pretty modest here, about $1,000 a year. It's not something we can guarantee, but we'd expect there to be some modest additional savings from that. Next slide. So getting into some more details on the financials. So again, as I mentioned, that out of that 90,000, there still is, sorry, 19,000, there still are equipment costs and some other costs that would be captured. So if we look first at the savings, we have the $18,900 in the estimated energy savings, the demand charge savings was $1345. That was based on 2019. So the total savings that that system would have generated in 2019 is $20,000. Out of that, there's a cost to the equipment that we would effectively amortize, and we would expect that to be about $13,000, $13,500. That is very much an unknown right now, and that's something that we will get a much, we'll get a clear picture on once we run an RFP. And then we're including a small yearly cost to offset our program costs of running the program. This does not include recapturing any of the costs we've done for the evaluations or any of our, you know, this is just moving forward. We expect there's gonna be time. We have to keep on top of the maintenance agreements, the vendors. If there's any issues, we handle it. So there are some, you know, time and staff costs to us for managing the program. And then the net savings to you would be about $5,600 in year one. And this would be a 20-year project. And then we're expecting that after 20 years, that we could, the ownership of the system could then go to you, at which point you would capture the full value of the savings. At that point, the equipment is paid off. And our approach is, you know, we're a partner with you, we're nonprofit, we're not making money on this. Our goal is really to help foster solar for our public partners. And we'll be open book about what our costs are. So when we run the RFO, we'll know what our actual equipment costs are, and then we can go back and revisit these numbers. Now, one important note on the battery is that there's a couple things. This pricing does not include the battery because, one, the battery is a net cost effectively. It's a, we don't know where the equipment pricing is on batteries these days, but they're still expensive. And so, you know, that's, we're, we have a low level of confidence around what we might expect the battery to cost, and that's gonna be a kind of an iterative conversation we would have with you on that. So you really kind of think of this as sort of two separate decisions that would be made as to whether to move forward with solar or whether to move forward with solar plus storage. If you didn't move forward with storage initially, we will make the project solar-ready. So in the future, if battery costs come down, then we could, it might make sense in the future. But we'll see what happens. And then, you know, one final note on this is that the net energy metering tariff, I imagine some of you may have heard, is currently under, being revised. And there was a decision that came out very recently that's still in process that would significantly impact the financials of projects. For this project, the net impact would be we'd probably have to put on a smaller system. So we are, we're moving to try and get these projects in under the current NEM tariff. So time really is of the essence that we move as quickly as possible. And so I'll explain exactly what we're asking for in a second, but let me just get to one other slide first. So the next slide, please. So I just want to put in context that, you know, $5,600, obviously not a windfall of money. It's important to note there's no upfront cost to it. So it is a windfall in the fact that there's no cost to it other than your staff time and, you know, supporting, allowing the contractors to come in, putting it on your building, dealing with your time, you know, to deal with it, but no direct cost. But if utility rates go up, as they have been in the 5% a year range, that $5,600 in year one over 20 years starts to turn into some, you know, meaningful money over the course of the project, depending on what, you know, discount rate you use. And if there's an escalation, here we put in a 1% escalation on the PPA rate, which we're just doing that to be conservative. Where our intent is that we would not have an escalation. So, you know, over the course of 20 years, you're still looking at over a quarter million dollars in value and, you know, for no upfront cost. So that's, you know, effectively the overall of the project. I think, you know, the next question is what we're asking for. And we've been asking each customer to effectively, as Rafael calls it, a yes-if commitment, to basically say, yes, we will move forward with this. If you can, if, once you do your RFP, you can come back to us, and the financials will be resulting in us getting a net savings. You know, and because, again, we don't know what the equipment cost is gonna be, and that really defines what the net savings are gonna be. And so there is a certain amount of uncertainty, and we're saying, look, if we can't provide you net savings, you don't move forward. But if we can, we want you to move forward. And the reason why we're asking for that commitment is, again, it's an aggregate portfolio. And the value to every individual project is that there's a bigger group of projects that's helping to drive the cost down for everybody. And if some people start falling out of that, it, you know, basically, the quotes that we get for pricing all fall apart because that was based on, you know, portfolio size. And so we need that, you know, kind of understanding moving in that we would do that. That's not true for the battery part of it because we really just, there's such, there's such a lower level of confidence around what the battery pricing is gonna be and how that will impact the project financials. But again, we would expect that to be a net cost that the city would need to be prepared to take on some costs. We've been looking at ways we could help with that, perhaps by being able to amortize it so the yearly cost would not be prohibitive. But we are expecting those batteries still to be pretty expensive. Next slide. Just to give you some context for, you know, who else we, what else we're working on, who else is in this portfolio. So these are all the other projects that we have approval on. And we also have the county of San Mateo as well. Oh, I do have that in here. So all these, you know, all the other cities have approved at this point and have passed a resolution similar to the ones that Sam has prepared. So, you know, we're hoping, again, that you will join the party, as colloquially. I think that, next slide. Yeah, so I think that's essentially everything. I know it's a lot of information. I guess I would invite Rafael to jump back in here if you have anything that you wanted to add that I may have missed.
No, I would just add again that we're, there's no margin here that PCE is building in for, you know, in the way of profit. Our goal here, the entire goal of the program structure here is to lower the cost for all the participating agencies. So by bringing all these projects together, which if they were done each individually would cost more, they should collectively cost less because a developer would look at that and say, okay, I've got a larger set of projects, and there's certain economies of scale that they would bring through their, you know, equipment purchases and the like. So we are hopeful that cities are looking at this as an opportunity to lower costs and to advance their decarbonization goals and lower their utility costs overall. So that's our overall strategic objective here.
Mayor Veer, if I may, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. Just a point of clarification is that we, this is a study session tonight to kind of tee up this topic. It's the first that council members have heard the details about it. But what we intended to do, and the report says, is that presuming we kind of have the head nods for the go-ahead from council, on the next agenda on the 24th, or whatever makes sense for PCE, we'll be bringing that resolution that was referenced, that David had referenced, for council approval. Or if there's other documentation that's ready at that time, we'll just, you know, bring it to meet whatever PCE's commitment needs are. But we don't have the resolution on the agenda for approval tonight, so that's a follow-up item, just to clarify.
Thank you, Kevin. Do we have any questions from council before we go to public comment? Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. It was very informative and helped me get my arms around what this even is. Because in the description from the city manager, I was like, I think I know what it's about, but I'm not sure. So that was great. It's, based on what I heard, it's a 20-year project effectively. It's a 20-year useful life of the panels. I didn't hear exactly what the useful life of the battery is, if you even can comment on that. And would that be, say it's five, would that incorporate the replacement of those batteries over that 20-year period? How can we think about that?
Sure. So first, clarification on the panels. The panel life, we expect, actually, to be closer to 25 to 30 years. The PPA agreement would be 20 years. But we would expect the panels to last longer, and some of the parts are actually warranted to 25 years.
And actually, Dave, to jump in on that. In that additional five to 10 years, Pacifica would derive 100% of the utility savings in that period of time. So actually, the savings are more than are being presented in this 20-year timeframe.
Thank you. That was my follow-up question. You anticipated it perfectly.
Ownership would, in most cases, transfer over to the city at that point. And that's based in part on, you know, city preferences and can be part of the discussion.
I see.
Just, so with regard to the battery, the battery lives are shorter. Generally, the equipment's warranted 10 years. You know, we would expect, I mean, a part of it also depends on how the battery's used. If the battery is, you know, sitting just for backup power and isn't really used all that much, I think we would expect it to last considerably longer. But, you know, we couldn't promise anything more than, you know, what we can get in a warranty. I mean, we would, you know, effectively ask for as much of a warranty as we could get.
Okay. Thank you. Let me come to us.
I had, so it's under warranty this whole time until which time is we own the system. What if, like, an extremely bad or system comes along? We're just stuck with the same system, right? I saw this photovoltaic window glazing system about 10 years ago. I still haven't seen it in real life, but I saw this whole show about it. And I haven't really seen it, which is much less expensive. How, what pot of money is this gonna come out of for us? That's a question. And, um, and after the 20 years, we're responsible for repairs after that time period? Was that correct, or is it?
So let me take them in order. So to your first question, to your first point about, you know, better equipment coming along, you know, we'd be, this would be a fairly standard rooftop solar system. I mean, the technology really hasn't changed all that much in, you know, in the last 30 years. I don't think we're gonna, I don't think we would see radical changes in the solar system that would make, replace it, you know, it's like there's some wildly better one, and you're stuck with it. The batteries, that would be, I would expect to have a lot more change. That technology's newer. So that's that question. With regard to the pot of money, you know, again, for the solar, there wouldn't be any upfront costs. It would just be the cost of the system is being paid out of the overall savings that the system generates. So there's actually, there's no pot that you need for that. For the battery, however, there would need to be some pot of money that it would come out of. And the third question, I'm sorry, can you, do you remember what the third, the third one was?
Oh, repairs.
Repairs. So I think we could structure the post-20 years in a couple ways. I mean, you know, one might be that there could be some kind of maintenance agreement. we could figure out for after 20 years. You know, the truth is that the solar part is a, you know, there isn't really all that, there isn't really all that much that can be, that needs to be maintained on those. You know, again, the batteries are probably a little trickier. But, you know, as, you know, Raphael said, at that point, you're also capturing the full savings of the system. So, you know, in year one is 20,000. After you've compound utility rates rising for the next, you know, 20 years, if they're, even if it's going up 3%, not 5%, it's a lot more than 20,000 you're saving in year 20. So, if you have to incur some maintenance costs, you're still coming out ahead. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, we should go to public comment then.
Okay, I see a hand raised by, first public comment by Christine Bowles. Now, Christie, and then followed by Matthew D. Christine, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Bob Bowles, not Christine Bowles. I'm Christine's husband. I just wanted to urge the council to really consider putting not only batteries in, but doing it to the maximum extent that's feasible. I think batteries would give you a community center that was sustainable in case of emergency or power outages, even heat waves or tidal waves, that sort of thing. I don't know if the location is the right one for tidal waves. But in any case, it would give you a very solid place for people to come in case of emergencies and would also let you hopefully play the pricing game with PG&E so that you got the best power pricing. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
What did you say?
I just urged them to...
Mr. Bowles, you need to mute, please.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. There was a hand raised by, oh, Matthew D. Matthew D., you may go ahead and unmute yourself, please. State your full name for the record at the beginning of your comment.
Oh, hello. I just wanted to quickly ask the city council, is a public comment for, like, speaking about an issue on the agenda or something not on the agenda? Because I don't know if I should speak now or later.
This period is for public comment on the study session for the photovoltaic project. There will be a section later in the meeting for comments on items not on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for now.
Thanks, Matt.
And Mayor Veer, I don't see any other hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Oh, I just, sorry, another hand just was raised, Ned Bitar.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Hello.
So, my name is Ned, and I have kind of some concerns. It seems like the system is going to be paid off within savings, which seems kind of like a roundabout, about way to say we're paying it off in payments versus just upfront cost. But in the long run, it might be better by able to go with a different alternative where it might be better serviceability from a company that we know has been really tried and true. Like, if, since this is such a new thing, maintenance is going to be a big problem. And if anything goes wrong, as most projects, things do with all these new electronics, it would be better to go with somebody who has a reputation of being able to deliver and being able to maintain their panels. Because, for example, like, a really good issue was brought by the council member about other alternatives. Solar roofs are becoming more and more of a thing. So, instead of waiting till if the building starts having leaks, we're going to have to remove all those panels and then start over from the beginning. It might be better to look into maybe solar roof tiles. So, you could basically get two birds in one stone. You get the panels and a new roof, all done in one cost. And there's a bunch of other companies who, for example, Tesla, as everybody knows, has really good panels, and they're everywhere, and they know what they're doing. Their batteries are top-notch, and they've been doing great work. But that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ned. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember O'Neill.
Actually, I did want to ask about the maintenance, given the physical location so near the ocean there. Has there been any estimate as what the annual maintenance cost would be for those panels? Because there's going to be metal exposed, et cetera, you know, sand blowing across it from the beach.
Well, the main, first, just to be clear, the maintenance would be covered by us, so it wouldn't, you know, it would be incorporated in the, you know, the overall project. The short answer is no, we would expect if there was going to be any particularly, you know, again, we have a portfolio of projects, so once we bring on a vendor, if they say to us, hey, look, you know, this building's so close to the ocean, we expect it's going to cost, you know, this much more for maintenance, that, you know, and it pushes this project into not saving money, then we wouldn't move forward.
Just to expand a little bit, if I may. So, first of all, Peninsula Clean Energy is, of course, not the one doing the installation, right, and the maintenance. But the costs, the additional maintenance costs that may arise would be borne by Peninsula Clean Energy through a contract with a well-established, you know, known installer and maintenance, a maintenance company who specializes in solar installations. So, addressing, you know, the potential concern raised earlier. And typically, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, there are performance expectations that are, would be put in, and if the solar panels start to decline in performance, then we would be calling upon our vendor to make sure to address any of the performance issues on the system, be it repairs or just cleaning the panels during that 20-year period.
Okay. And then, as a process question, I don't know whether this would be city manager or you guys. Tonight, we're just indicating, yes, we want to explore this option, but when it comes to the actual final contract, that would be at a later council meeting?
Yes, that's my understanding. And in addition, a decision about battery and cost of battery and, you know, capacity of battery component of the project would also come at a future decision point.
And how old is the existing roof on the community center?
Perhaps David knows that, or Raphael?
Yeah, we had, we actually did a structural assessment of the roof, and it passed structural. I can't remember off the top of my head what the age was of the roof. I think we would definitely want to, you know, revisit that and sync up to make sure that any planned maintenance is pulled forward to, prior to the installation. But we didn't see, I mean, this, we work, I mean, this was, this building out of all the portfolios, the only one we've actually done the structural assessment of so far because it is, you know, it's an older building, and we wanted to make sure that it could support the panels. And so, you know, we did do that, and it passed, and we, you know, we looked at some of these questions then. So, you know, I think, I can't, but I just, I can't remember. There were some, I think we had talked with the facility staff about pulling forward a, an upcoming, you know, it's not a resurfacing of the roof, but it's some periodic maintenance that's done to pull it forward.
Well, I mean, I've walked around that building, and I've actually seen some of the rebar on the side walls from the concrete. You know what I mean? I don't know, I don't know where it goes, but I could see the rebar, which would be, give me a concern. I mean, I don't know how much this thing weighs, but additional weight on the building, when you can see rebar on the side of the building, is a concern because I don't want, you know what I mean? Just...
Yeah, I mean, again, we did...
Don't get me wrong, I am, I have solar panels myself. I am pro-solar energy. But I think when I was in the school board, when we were remodeling the schools, we looked at solar energy, and at that point, it was 20-year lifespan and a 30-year payback. So, obviously, this, you know, that was 14, 15-year, you know, years, well, 20 years ago. So, obviously, technology's changed, et cetera. But I am concerned, given the structural integrity of the building, and I don't want to put this in, who would be responsible if, let's say, something happens and we need to put a new roof on in five years? What's the, who's responsible for removal of the panels?
All right, well, I, let me start one step back. That is a good question. You know, with regard to what we've done, you know, we've, again, we're working with an experienced engineering firm there, you know, they work with a structural engineer that has come and evaluated the site and said, we're not expecting any issues for solar. So, that's kind of like, you know, gating step one. You know, as Raphael said, you know, our role is to bring in the experts, not necessarily be them. And then, the second sort of gating thing would be, once we bring on an EPC contractor to do the work, they're, of course, also going to look at this, you know, project, and they will give us our, you know, opinion at that. If they see issues that the, that the first structural engineer missed, then, you know, that would be another point at which we might say, hey, you know, we missed something here. So, I, you know, I think that there will be a solid, you know, these aren't going to get thrown up on the roof if it hasn't been, you know, well-vetted as to whether that, that should be there. If the roof suddenly needs to be replaced in a few years, exactly who would bear the cost of, you know, the panels would have to be unmounted and then stored and then put back on when the new roof is there. Exactly who would be responsible? I think it would depend on what caused the roof issue. I mean, is it, is it a, you know, something unexpected happens, at which point it's probably an insurance claim? But I just, I, I would be wary of conjecture, you know, offering too much conjecture at this point. I think it would, it would depend on what the circumstances are. If there was, if there was going to be regularly scheduled maintenance in five years that just gets missed in this process, you know, then, you know, I'd say it's not your fault. But I mean, we would, we want to make sure that we understand any scheduled maintenance and that we're planning accordingly for that. But if anything, you know, unexpected happens that's a result of an accident or, you know, something, then, you know, we're starting to move into insurance force majeure. I don't, I don't know. But I don't, I don't know, Raphael, if you have any...
I saw Sam Square light up all of a sudden. Like, he might have an answer to the question, how old is the roof?
I do not know how old the roof is. All I recall from, from the field services manager, Biagini, that it was done probably about five years before I got to the city. So, that's almost eight years ago. So, maybe nine years old, but it was done when, when Biagini was here.
Okay, so when you come back, and I think Kevin said that you might, you, they're going to shoot to come back with this item in January first to actually, you know, indicate interest, could you find out how old is the roof? And then, I, I guess when we, when you come back, we indicate the interest, and then when you come back with an actual contract or, I don't know what you want to call it, but contract or proposal, then we would, you would have access to this, the analysis to see general upkeep? Because I know, you know, with rebar, it's been a while, and I don't know if you fixed the rebar or not, but, you know, I did see rebar there in the walls, you know?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Councilmember O'Neill. What I was going to suggest is we can come back when we bring the resolution forward and include information about the age, when the, when the roof was last upgraded and its current status. You know, without doing a full assessment, if there's any detail from the engineers' work that PCE worked with and staff, we can provide that as well. And then, just generally, you know, the concrete's falling that's occurring on the community center, I think that's probably more cosmetic and structural, but we'll also, you know, see what information we have about, about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Bigstick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Absolutely favor bringing the resolution back. And after that, I, what was occurring to me as I was hearing Councilmember O'Neill speak is that we're a council that tends to favor having more information than less. And so, whether that be about our roof or batteries in general, having the presentation you just gave as a part of our packet so that we can review it at our leisure, whatever information you're capable of bringing to us, I think we'd very much appreciate. And I was also reminded by a comment that Councilmember O'Neill made that, you know, I work at the Lindemar, in the Lindemar Shopping Center, right there, in a fairly close, approximately about as far from the ocean as the community center is. And pretty much on a daily basis, as I'm leaving from work, I have to use my windshield wiper fluid. I, I don't think it's sand, I think it's probably salt from the sea breeze that gets affixed to my windshield. And that just sparked in me, oh, yeah, that could be a thing that happens to our photovoltaics. And so, I don't know if that's been put into the calculation prior to now, but if you take a look at that some way, that might be advantageous to our final decision-making. Thank you.
Councilmember Beckmeyer? Have anything?
Uh, just, I was thinking the same thing that Tiger just said about the maintenance. And I know one area that you might have some enlightenment on that is that we have panels at our wastewater treatment facility in McCory. And we've asked that question before around those panels. And I know there are systems sometimes that have automatic water that washes down or things happen. But if it does entail a staff cost for that, that, you know, cleaning them so that they can perform at optimum performance, then it would be important for us to know that in, in reference to Mayor Protem Bigstick's comment about, we always want more information as much as we can ahead of time. Thanks.
Mike, did you have another question or another comment?
Yeah, just to kind of, just so I don't sound like the gloomy Gus here against solar panels. We did have, I believe they have solar panels on the council chambers, if I remember correctly. And I never heard of any issues from that. You know what I mean? So, I'm not trying to be totally negative on this, but I, but the community center actually has a lot more people in it, a lot heavier usage. And for it not to function or, you know, be an issue is more critical because it is a large, larger system with more weight, I think. And I know we are, and I don't know, actually, Sam could probably enlighten this, they were going to be making the attempt to upgrade and get new solar panels at the wastewater treatment plant because I think those recovering, I think, what was it, 15% or 20% of the power? And today's technology could bring it up to, what was it, 50?
I wasn't the project manager on the, on the solar panel, but yes, the technology has become, it is a lot better now, and, and the output of the solar panels is much greater. So, you know, at the time that we had the, the original system up, it was probably around 20%. It's probably way up though, you know, at least double. So, newer technology, better quality, it's a little cheaper as well.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one comment. I, I think I agree with what Mr. Bowles said because that was something that I was concerned about was the battery. And like, if we can get the maximum extent of the battery, I think that's a really good idea. So, if we can get as much information as we can about the batteries and the choices that we have, that would be really good. But I, I think it's a great idea and should move forward. really good, but I, I think it's a great idea and should move forward.
Anybody else?
I agree with that. Um, I think because we designated the community center as a cooling center for those rare days in Pacifica that we do need it. And if it's bad enough in Pacifica that we need a cooling center, it's bad. So that's important. And I know we put in, I don't know the real name of it, but a swamp cooler effectively, which can take a lot of power and, and those are important. So yes, the maximum battery to help us extend that four hour battery backup to 16 or more hours, um, as, as much as we can would be great.
Yeah, I just, I, when I, again, I just, when I said four hour battery, I just, you know, want to be clear that that's, that's if the battery's being used at full power. So the existing battery, we would expect to be effectively a 16 hour battery based on the historical usage of the building.
I agree. When we had the extended power outages, people used the community center to go and charge their phones and, uh, do things they couldn't do at home that were urgent for people. I mean, having your phone charged just is an urgent thing. So, um, we did use the community center for that too. And so I, I agree that if we do this, that we definitely need the batteries.
Owen, do you have another direction?
Yeah, I think I'm hearing consensus from the council to move forward and bring a commitment resolution back. And we'll work with PCE on, on that specific step and, uh, and the timing of it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And David and Raphael, thank you for your presentation and just, you know, we are, Peninsula Clean Energy is very important to all of us. Thank you for being here. And, uh, we get to take a little break now in between our sessions, so we'll come back at seven o'clock for our regular meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, hello, I have a quick question.
Yes. Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Here.
Councilmember Vodarlos.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Here.
Mayor Protem Big Stick.
Present.
Mayor Beer.
Here.
And I have all council members present, um, at this, uh, time. I'll make an announcement regarding the meeting format. This meeting is being held by video conference with no physical location open to the public pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section 54953 as amended by AB 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The public can observe and participate in the meeting via the Zoom link provided in the agenda or by phone to the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. This meeting may also be observed live on local TV channel 26 or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream. For this meeting, live verbal public comments may be made through Zoom. For members of the public participating via Zoom, use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on an agenda item or during oral communications when the mayor calls upon that item. For those participating by phone, use star nine to raise your hand to request to speak. The city clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and allow you to unmute after calling you by screen name or the last four digits of the phone number from which you're calling. Please clearly state your full name for the record at the start of your public comment. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting, but will be made part of the written record and were provided to council members and posted on the city's website for those received by 12:00 PM today. Um, email comments are not monitored during the live meeting. The format of this meeting may be altered or the meeting may be canceled if needed. You may check on the status of the meeting by visiting the city's website at www.cityofpacifica.org for any updates.
Thank you, Sarah. I will now read the land acknowledgement. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatoush Aloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramatoush Aloni peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatoush Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatoush Aloni people. I'm also doing the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so there's a note about the order of the agenda. I'm supposed to say that, right, Sarah?
Yeah, we're just noting the special order of the agenda tonight for the public, uh, hearing.
Okay, um, the public hearing on redistricting, agenda item number nine must be held at 7:30 PM or sooner after following completion of the pending business items, which is the consent calendar. The public hearing has been agendized to immediately follow consent calendar. Oral communications, council communications, and staff communications are agendized after the public hearing. Consideration items will be held after the communication items. If any items are pulled from consent, those shall be heard during the consideration portion of the meeting. And I'm sure that is a little confusing to some, because it was a little confusing to me. So we're going to make our way through this just fine. It's time for the consent calendar. Um, do any council members want to pull any items for deliberation, discussion? Um, or discussion by whole as, um, for the council by whole? Anybody want to pull anything from consent? Great. Do we go to public comment? Yes?
Yeah, so now you can open up to public comment for consent items.
Okay, great. So if we have any public comment on any of the consent items, which are items one through, where am I? One through eight.
Yes, Mayor Beer, we have one hand raised by, say, Dan. Dan, if you can unmute yourself, you can now speak, please state with, um, which consent item, um, item we'd like to speak upon.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Excellent. I'd like to speak on, uh, item number four, the emergency order, Anza Pump House. Tell me when to proceed.
Proceed.
Excellent, thank you. I'm sure all of you have seen the emails going back and forth between the, uh, wastewater department and Public Works and Lindemar residents. There seems to be some question among the city council and Public Works that Lindemar, Lower Lindemar is actually flooding. On the 23rd, we had three feet of water in Lindemar that totaled several cars, December 23rd, you know, eight days after an earlier flood that totaled several cars. I got an email from the city manager, Kevin Woodhouse, saying it was not at this level. It appears that we had the city manager, Public Works, and wastewater all out of town that day. I don't know who they had watching the, watching the pump house. It was not turned on. I'm the closest house. I can hear it. I can see it. Um, the pump was not turned on. Here's the deal. Here's why they don't want to have to report whenever Lindemar floods. Where the Panda Express is, is a cleanup site. There was a gas station there. Every time that gets wet, liquefaction, they have standing water. They have to report it to the state, okay, as a fuel spill. That is still a cleanup site. Anytime Lindemar gets flooded, they have to report it to the state. They hate doing that, okay? But we're getting flooded three times a year like clockwork in December. Um, I remember when we had 14 cars destroyed in December 2014 on that same corner that public, the, the city manager at the time, Lori Tenfo, and this, uh, the mayor, Karen Irvin, were not aware of it until over a month later. Okay? It's happening. If someone dies there, you guys are going to have personal liability because you're aware of it. Okay? We've told you many times in writing, each of you received notice of them. Sometimes I get an email from some council member that says, oh, it didn't flood there. I can assure you it did. I suggest you go talk to the residents of Anza Drive. And I don't mean select residents. I suggest you pick any of the 50 houses on Anza Drive and ask them if their street, if their car was flooded, Chris, the eve of Christmas Eve on the 23rd. I can assure you, the answer will be yes. Again, when you don't report these fuel spills into the ocean, when you don't report these spills, uh, of stormwater into the ocean, when you don't turn the pump house on, when you don't staff it, I mean, it's causing hundreds of thousands of dollars of damage to all these properties, you know? Every single, they're, it's like liquefaction, the block's wet for months. Everybody has mold in their house, you know? I had a car destroyed and my neighbor had a car destroyed. Two other neighbors had a car destroyed. Take care of this problem. It's simple. Thank you.